Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Beck.
Here.
Councilman Wilson will be here. He's coming in a little later. Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham, as she will lead the invocation, please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come before you today. God, we come humbly, but we come boldly before your throne. We thank you for another opportunity of life, health, and strength, God. We thank you today for wisdom and knowledge to do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We pray for your instruction, Lord God, and we thank you for your guidance. We thank you for the things that you've done, the things you're doing, and the things that you are going to do. We speak blessings over our city, Lord God. We speak increase and life over our city. As your continued blessings upon our mayor, upon our city council, those who work for our city and live in our city. Father God, we have your faith, God, to call those things that be not as though they were. So, we thank you, God, and we praise you in advance for those things that are to come. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and council meetings held on September the 2nd.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of August 29th through September the 4th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor Ford, do you have any this morning? None today? All right, thank you, sir. Make sure I don't miss anybody out there. The glare gets me sitting up here sometimes. I want to make sure. Okay. All right, then we'll go to agenda item 8. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to recess the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the recess.
I'd like to welcome everybody back to the council meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to the reconvene.
All right, we are at agenda item 10. This is under unfinished business. We have an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2026 budgets. I do want to point out that we do have an addition today from last week. Exhibit A has been updated to reflect one position that was inadvertently left out of last week. It doesn't impact the budget in any way that we have to vote on adding it. I just want to let everybody know that that's reflected in our folder. All right, so item 10A is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2026 budgets. This ordinance approves the following budgets: General Fund, $80,947,000; Special Revenue Funds, $11,566,517; Enterprise and Internal Service Funds, $16,558,556; Capital Projects Fund, $9,540,930; Capital Projects Fund II, $8,338,045. This ordinance also adopts the employee pay scale. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to clarify one thing. I received a note from a citizen about the way the bond proceeds were going to be allocated in the budget or in the financial reporting. And I just want to clarify that those bond funds are recorded as debt in our financial statements. They're not recorded as income, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to-
Yeah, on your capital projects where you have all of your line items for debt service, we have taken the number that has been given to us by stipend estimate and put that in this budget, so it's accounted for, like you said, as a debt payment.
I just wanted to clarify that. That's the only thing I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
That was, I mean, that was pretty much the same question that I had, and he and I had spoken about it on a side note. And then, I guess, the additional that I bring, let's see, where was I? One second.
Councilman Avery is probably reading from the same message that I got.
We'll stick with that. That was my biggest thing, is that that was considered debt, not revenue. Which, I think that was to my question that I asked you.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any questions, comments? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution awarding bid number 3606 for Lakewood Drive Improvements Project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Alabama Grading and Excavating LLC, and the amount is $2,63,951.60. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to Gadsden Beautification Board. This appoints Danny Carlisle, Kyle Chambers, and Judy Swafford, and reappoints Denisea Getow and Tom Banks for terms ending on July 31st, 2028. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, can I say something on this?
Sure, Mayor Ford.
Doesn't seem like a big deal, but there are a lot of boards that the city and that the mayor's office has to appoint in the council. And I just ask the public, if you're willing to serve on a board, we need you, because we have a same list of people we run through, and the same people are serving on about five or six boards. So if you're willing to serve on a board, we have a place for you. I'm not saying we're like a church, and there's a lot of committees, but we got a board for everybody, okay? And we can use your expertise or whatever you have to help us fill these slots, because there's ordinance that have been passed. What I don't want to do is come with an ordinance to do away with the board altogether and just say we don't need it. That doesn't send a good signal to the public. Plus, these boards were set up for a reason and a purpose that, you know, the beautification boards gives out awards, honors people for keeping their yard up to date, or being the best in the neighborhood, and people take pride in the community. And then other people want to compete with it and want to beat them out, and, you know, and then they have a banquet. And we raise the money, and we fund it, but if you're willing to serve on these boards, please let Mel C. Guy know in my office, because we appreciate these people willing to serve and thank them. That's all I'd say.
That's a good comment. Go ahead, Mayor.
Also, I want to add to the beautification board, just in case if I forget in my comments, and mayor may speak to it, or someone. Beautification, I think it's this Thursday, they're doing the 9/11 event, and I just wanted, since it was fresh on my mind, to mention it. They're doing a 9/11 event here off of Broad Street. They're at Court Street, I think it's at 4th.
Fourth and Broad.
Fourth and Broad. And then, I think in the reading, it gave some insight that this board was erected in 1968, when a former mayor, Steve Means, was in office, and then he's going to be the keynote speaker as well. So, as is mentioned, they do more than just, you know, come and meet, but they serve a great purpose. On the point, as it relates to the beautification award for yards and things of that nature, I would like to high-profile it, to extreme it, to give a community challenge to where that we see how many can we get to actually apply for those awards, so that we can highlight all of our communities as it relates to how well people keep up their yard and their homes. And so, what it does, it adds the value to our community, the competitiveness of just making sure that our neighborhoods and streets are clean and nice, because, of course, we know some of the things that are going on in our communities that I'll speak about later. But nevertheless, this committee does those awesome things. But I did want to mention that 9/11 event that they also do as well, that's coming up this Thursday.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President, if I could elaborate on that.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Avery, because I was going to mention that, too. The beautification board has been responsible for the 9/11 program every year, so it's something that they take very seriously, and it's a beautiful program. If you've never attended, the mayor's office will be in attendance there. And actually, Councilman Beck and his former colleague, Dr. Cynthia Toles, will give the vacation at that program. Our very own Ms. Iva Nelson will perform the National Anthem at that program. And as Councilman Avery said, former mayor Steve Means will be the keynote speaker. There'll be lowering of the flag by the Gadsden Fire Department with Fire Chief Vance Brown and the Honor Guard and the JROTC. The Gadsden State Choir will perform, directed by J.T. Harrell. There'll be a moment of silence, a ringing of the bell by the fire department, and the exit of the Honor Guard. And then, Austin Walsh from Gadsden City High School of Music and Theater, director, will perform taps. And resident Don Neal will be performing on the bagpipes during the entry and exit of the program. So it really is a beautiful program. There's a lot of musicians and a lot of people that put a lot of time and effort into making that a great memorial for everybody that we lost on 9/11. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great words. All right, well, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing use of the Memorial Bridge, also known as Broad Street Bridge, for Sunset Sips. This authorizes downtown Gadsden Incorporated use of the Memorial Bridge for the Sunset Sips event taking place on October 21st. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is a much less somber event, I'll tell you. On the Broad Street Bridge, it's beautiful. I think you can get tickets from K-More at Downtown Gadsden, Inc. It's a really fun event on the Broad Street Bridge there as the sun goes down. It's just a beautiful time to gather with community members and have a fun experience, so.
I think it's also important to note that the funds raised from the Sunset Sips, it's a fundraiser. And so, they take that money and put it back into downtown Gadsden. The flags that you see, the colored flags that are on the lamp posts are purchased with that, the lights that we enjoy that outline the structures of each building is paid for from money from Sunset Sips, and numerous other improvements. The sound system and things like that, it's just a, so it's a fundraiser for the Downtown Gadsden Incorporated. It is a fun time. It's kind of neat to be on the bridge and look out and see, and it's that sunset. So, it's just a nice evening. Anybody else?
Are you going to continue that word before you do that?
Ma'am, we don't take questions from the audience. Kindly refrain from speaking. Kindly refrain from speaking.
We need to conduct the vote, because Phil.
All right, any other discussion? What, I'm sorry. We have a, yeah, vote, yeah. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing lighting services agreement with Alabama Power Company. This is to upgrade an existing light on Home Street to LED fixtures and complete any routine maintenance, and the amount is $7.38 per fixture per month. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 is a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement with Three Notch Group. This is for the addition of pickleball courts and two fire pit areas to the plans for Phase 5 of the Gadsden Sports Park, and the amount is $17,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 16 is new business. I believe we have quite a few items this morning. We'll start in District 6 with Councilwoman Minatra.
Yes, Mr. President. I have Resolution 1099, and this is to approve the issuance of a special retail alcohol beverage license for Oktoberfest, which will be held on Thursday night, October 16th, from 5 to 8:00. And this will be in celebration of Alabama City and the Ritz Theater. I would like to ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and take this resolution up for vote today.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. The next one I have is Resolution 1120, and this is authorizing the agreement that the city has with the Humane Society Pet Rescue and Adoption Center. And this is basically the budget that the City of Gadsden authorizes for our support of the Humane Society. And it is part of the state requirement for a city over 5,000 to have and support a pet rescue and adoption center. The budget is the same as it was last year, and I am asking my colleagues to suspend the rules and take this up as a resolution today.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minatra. I think Councilman Wilson has a few.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I was just wanting to get my numbers correct here. The first one I have is a resolution from the Police Department authorizing an agreement with Tyler Technologies. This is a resolution that will actually amend our agreement with, between the Police Department and Tyler Technologies to downgrade the services that we have with Tyler right now, as a result of us transferring the dispatch responsibilities to Edwah County 911. So, previously, for those who aren't familiar, we used to handle all of those dispatch responsibilities for the City of Gadsden ourselves. Now, we are consolidating with the Edwah County 911 Board to allow them to handle dispatch of 911 calls, the same way they handle 911 calls for the rest of the county. So it'll all be operated out of one 911 center. And so, as a result of that, some of the technology and some of the software that we used in-house here at the City of Gadsden to handle that dispatch, we don't need it anymore. And so, we're going to actually downgrade that contract. It'll take it from, the original amount was $141,000, and now the amended amount, because we still, we will still use Tyler Technology for some things, just not as many things since it's going to Edwah County 911. So, it was $141,000, and now that contract will be $87,339. So this is actually a savings for the city as part of consolidating all that 911 stuff under one building. So, if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, the next one I have is also from the Police Department. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Motorola. This is for our in-car video camera storage. Previously, that video footage from our in-car cameras in the police cars was stored in a couple of different ways. This will actually consolidate all that into the cloud, so it'll be digitally available. It'll be easier to search. It'll be easier to share when there's Freedom of Information requests for that video footage. We can pull it up much easier, because it'll all be consolidated on a web-based cloud server instead of on physical servers actually in our buildings. And the cost of that storage for the first year is $75,350, and then after that, it goes down to $45,600 a year for year 2 through 5. And again, this isn't net new costs, this is, we already had this in the budget, we're just changing how that video storage, how those videos are stored in the system. So, if there's no objections, I'd like to consider this under new business as well.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I mean, again, just out of abundance of clarity, neither one of those items that we just considered are new money. This is money that was already in the budget. It was already being paid. It does not generate new spending in any way for the city. The last one I have, Mr. President, is authorizing a settlement participation form for the opioid settlement. This is a, this is a process that the city has been going through for, well, I've been on the council seven years, and I know we've been dealing with it for at least seven years. So what happened is, as you know, the opioid crisis that has killed millions and millions of people in the United States, there was a large nationwide lawsuit filed against the corporations that were responsible for the, not only the manufacturing and distribution, but the advertising and marketing of these opioids that led to so many people being addicted. So collectively, several government agencies, including the state of Alabama and hundreds of cities across the nation, sued these manufacturers who were making these opioids and the distributor, distribution companies that distributed them out to these communities. And as this settlement is coming, this whole lawsuit is coming to a close, we have one more step that also includes several of the secondary manufacturers that were making these opioids and providing them to the market. And so, what this does is this allows us, as a city, to participate in that settlement agreement and receive proceeds from the money that they've agreed to pay, these manufacturers have agreed to pay. So we'll receive an undisclosed amount as of yet. We don't know exactly how much it's going to be, because we don't know how many cities are going to participate. We don't know how much they're going to have to divide it by. We have already gotten some of those funds, and those funds are specifically earmarked and can be only, only be spent on community investments into things that will combat the opioid crisis and opioid epidemic, for example. Those funds pay for the Narcan medication that our police officers carry with them and our EMTs and first responders carry with them. In the event that they are called to the scene of someone who's having an overdose, they can administer this Narcan medication immediately on sight, and it will literally save their life right before your eyes. I've seen it administered myself, and it's absolutely incredible. I mean, someone who is on the verge of death can receive a dose of this Narcan medication and instantly their eyes open back up. It's like magic. I've never seen anything like it. It's incredible. So not only do those funds go to being able to purchase things like that Narcan medication, but it also goes to, can be used to fund programs for people who are suffering from addiction to help them, help them make their way to recovery and get back into day-to-day life and several other things. So what this does is simply allows us, the legal department, to send a notification to the state of Alabama, letting them know that we are going to participate in that settlement group, and we would like to receive some proceeds from that settlement. So if there's no objections, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today as well.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Take a breath there. Thank you for your help. Item 17 is department reports, committees and boards. Do we have any this morning, Mayor Ford?
No, sir.
Department heads, all right. Item 18 is citizen request to speak. Ms. Jennifer Greenwood has asked to speak on the effect of the urban grant on property values in District 1 and 3 and the revitalization of Carver Center along Tuscaloosa Avenue. Good morning, Ms. Greenwood, and welcome to the council meeting. Just for our records, if you will, step forward and give us your home address, so we can have that for our records, please, ma'am.
My home address is 801 Roger Street. I have door residence in 943 Lot Forest Way, Riverdale, Georgia, so I have door residence.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to say good morning, mayor, city councilmen, and community leaders. I'm going to read, because I know I only have like five minutes, and I'm just going to read to kind of help me to be able to cover a bunch of items. So, I'm here on the behalf of the residents of District 1 and 3 to follow up on our previous conversation meeting that I had with the mayor, as, that was a very productive meeting. The mayor directed the, the Public Works Director and a member-at-large to work with me on a community revitalization. I want to thank you for that, that was directed, and recognize the importance of collaboration and raising property value, important in the quality of life in our urban neighborhoods. I understand that we have $3 million in a Greenway grant awarded to the cities. We have a tremendous opportunity of making a lasting impact in District 3. I think I read it correctly, that Greenway goes through Tuscaloosa some kind of way. You guys can help me to understand that. Our community wants to use these funds, invest it wisely, not just in the infrastructure, but a project to truly uplift the families and to protect the homeowners and create opportunity for growth. Today, my goal is simple, to ensure that we move forward in a partnership with clear communication and accountability and transparency, that we can own, that we owe to the resident and make sure the promise turn into progress. So, some of the key points that I'm here is to get a clear understanding what the breakdown of the Greenway is being allocated for in these districts, what percentage of the funds that would be directly in the home revitalization and infrastructure and raising property value in our urban community. We also, will, will the community be able to be informed about the progress and the impact on these investments. At our previous meeting, the mayor directed, like I said, the Works Director and members-at-large to work with me. How do we ensure our collaboration happens to be with consistent and transparent? And what I mean by that, once we get started working with them, I like to have a better understanding of how we going to be able to move forward. He can direct them to work with me, but they have to be willing to work with me. And so, for an example, if I happen to call and I need to sit down to be able to get a better clarification on what we are doing, one of the projects that I talked to the mayor and two of his other cabinets was about Carver. It's being- It's being able to have the funds that Carver can be able to have paint and to make it as nice as some of the other community rec center to where it can pay for itself. And by, people would be more reluctant to rent it, rent it with having, okay, if you having a wedding and it's pink and blue, and we got burgundy and orange walls, no one is not going to use that facility. It's bringing it back to where we can make it inviting and transparent, neutral colors. So I talked with the mayor, he did have someone to leave open the doors so that I can be able to meet back with them as a feedback. I also asked that the trees to be pruned back at Carver. I'm working with CCRC, the president, she haven't arrived, I don't think she's here, but we are working, tacking and together to be able to get some things done as a committee and with the work of the mayor. I want you all to understand, I'm a private citizen, I had built the house, I gutted it and built it. I was very disappointed with what my appraisal came back for. And the reasoning why is because I have to look at all of these buildings that's over there is condemned, they are not being kept up, we have condemned homes. I don't support everything that my councilmen's agree upon, but I will work with them so we can come to a neutral understanding. If we are tabling things that, to where the homeowner is not have, they just have their name on the property, but it's being condemned, we can't save property for them. They have to be within themselves that want to renovate and be able to make it appealing to that district. Because if I'm going to continue to try to work and revitalize, and we are, and I'm at a stop with the city, this is what we need to look at. And so I'm here to work with you all, and I'm just asking you to please understand. I'm not here to hard-nose nobody. I want to work for my district, and I want to continue to build in my districts, but I can't build and put money in it when my appraisal is coming back at a negative. And so that's where I am, and that's what I'm fighting for.
Thank you for coming today, Ms. Greenwood. Appreciate your words. Thank you very much.
So, Mike, can I ask some questions?
Well, you-
Or did I run out of time?
You've run out of time. The sitting is designed for you to speak, and so if you have a question afterwards, whoever you'd want to speak to, I'm sure we'd be glad to speak with you.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, we'll start now in Section 19 with remarks by mayor and council. We're gonna, I liked how the flow last week went, Councilman Robinson, so we're gonna, we're gonna go to Nakalula Falls. We're gonna let you start us off.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much, I just, I've got to remind everybody, and I'll remind next Tuesday, we have the Art on the Rocks and the Wine Festival of Nakalula Falls on the 20th and 21st, that's next Saturday and Sunday, so that's a big event, and we're hoping to have a lot of people come out for that. I think the weather's going to be perfect even this far out, but that'll be all, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Yes, Chief-
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Would you say all that again, please?
I sure will. I don't have much to say, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everybody, and I'll do it again next week, is that we have the Art on the Rocks and the Wine Festival, it's next Saturday and Sunday on 9:20. I'll remind everybody again next week also, and we're expecting a lot of people there, and I think the weather's going to be perfect even this far out.
Way to go. I think you're right.
I'd like to see that run again. I think I did that pretty good.
Yeah.
Right on it. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mayor, you know, a flip-flop, you know, we always start with you. If you have to be somewhere, you, okay, well, then we'll let you-
I like hearing it, really.
All right, we'll let you close.
You say it, you agree.
That was good. Councilwoman Monatras.
Well, I'd just like to mention, I know we've talked a lot about the beautification board, but something that happened that started this week is that the beautification board accepted a challenge that the mayor's former chief of staff Brett Johnson gave, which was to add some, to add a project to the Alabama City Wall Street location. So they did, and it started actually with one planter completed yesterday. So there are planters that are throughout the Wall Street area, and the beautification board took it upon themselves that they are painting those planters and adding, we will be adding flowers to those from Parks and Rec Landscaping Group. So it add, it's adding a lot to the Wall Street area, and we appreciate the fact that we were included as a project. So to the beautification board, we say thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Just a couple of things. As the president said, for those of y'all that don't understand, I know it can get kind of confusing sometimes up here, but, you know, the Open Meetings Act of the state of Alabama allows people to come and observe the city doing business. It's not intentionally designed for you guys not to be able to ask us questions or not to be transparent. It's just, these meetings aren't designed to be a back-and-forth, a question-and-answer because they drag out for a long time, and it's not a very efficient use of all these department heads and city officials that have to sit in here. So please know that it's not because we don't want to take questions or that we're trying to avoid having that conversation. It's just not the way the meeting was set up. It's just designed for, for you guys to be able to observe the city doing its business. We are all available, all of our contact information is readily available, same thing for the department heads here. If you guys ever have a question, I've given my personal cell phone number out a million times, I'll do it again. It's 256-399-3738. And I want to clarify when I say that, I do not have a secretary, I do not have a staff, this is a one-day-a-week job for me. When you call my number, you are calling my personal cell phone number. If I can't answer, I'm not going to answer, but I will call you back, I promise you, I will get back to you. I do have another full-time job that I work to pay the bills and provide for my family like everybody else, but I will always call you back. So, and please know, that's the truth for everybody else up here. If you reach out, they will return your phone calls. But I do want to say this in general, based on some of the comments today. Number one, the Broad Street Bridge, I hate that the citizen chose to, chose to leave because I was going to make it clear, anyone who's been keeping up with the city knows that the Broad Street Bridge restoration is a huge part of this new rise bond project that we've been discussing for the last several weeks. In addition to that, we've received, I think it's over $6 million in federal funding from Senator Tuberville and Senator Britt's office specifically for the repaving and restoration of the Broad Street Bridge project. That is a bridge that's almost 120 years old, I think. It is, there's a lot to do there, and it's a very delicate process when you're working on a historic bridge like that. So there's going to be, it takes time, but those projects have been in the works for years, literally, and they're coming to fruition, and we have the funding secured to do them. So the Broad Street Bridge, in answer to the question, will be repaved. Secondly, I just wanted to speak to Ms. Greenwood, our speaker's comments about the Greenway project. The Greenway project, it is a $3 million grant, but that's a 50-50 match with the city of Gadsden, so it's actually a $6 million project. The purpose of that project is to make Gadsden a more walkable city, to connect different communities that maybe have been isolated or ostracized, to have clear paths to where people can easily and safely commute from different parts of the community, not just the historic district or the rich parts of town. It's literally designed to connect this whole community and tie it all together. There's an intense focus on the safety and walkability of that, of that project. And the one thing that I want to elaborate on, and I think the speaker will appreciate this, having some residency there in Georgia, when I was right out of college at Auburn, I took a job in Atlanta with Georgia Pacific, and that was right around the time that the Beltway project in Atlanta was launched. This was back in 2007. This was a project, essentially, everybody knows that terrible, terrible existence that is the outer loop of 285 in Atlanta, you know, the outer loop, or what we call the Beltway. If you, or the perimeter, I think, is what it's actually referred to when I lived there. The reason I remember that is because you were considered cool or uncool if you were ITP or OTP. You were a cool kid if you lived inside the perimeter. You were not a cool kid if you lived outside the perimeter, so I remember that. But what it is, is that used to be an old railway loop, all way back in the day, the perimeter, 285. Well, if you come inside there by about five miles in the city of Atlanta, you have what used to be another old rail loop that went all the way around the city. They call that the Beltway. Well, the city set about on a billion-dollar project to convert that entire Beltway into a green space, a walkway, very similar to what we're talking about here, to connect the entire city so that you could access anywhere in Atlanta basically from this Beltway. And I was reading a, an article about this this morning in anticipation of the comments about the Greenway project, and it's estimated that I think it's increased property values along the Beltway by over $30 billion, that Beltway project has. Now, the unintended consequence of this that I think we all need to work out, look out for as we talk about improving property values, is some of our low to moderate income residents can be faced with tremendous property tax increases when their property taxes do go way up because of projects like this. And I think it's, it's really valuable for us to take a look at what Atlanta's done as they approached this. They actually developed a program called the Legacy Resident Retention Program. And what that is, is for people who are already living in these communities before this big development came through, and they saw these massive increases in their property taxes, a lot of low to moderate income people couldn't afford the burden of those increased property taxes. So the city of Atlanta partnered with a couple of nonprofits to create some funds that were available for individuals who have lived there their whole lives and experienced those dramatic increases in property taxes to help them offset the cost of those additional property taxes. And I think that that's something that we probably need to be looking at down the road as, over the years, as we continue to invest in this Greenway project. I worry less about it having a negative impact on these communities than I worry more about it's going to have such a big positive impact on these communities that we may run into a situation where we could be causing an unintended burden on, on individuals who have lived in those communities their whole life. It's kind of like when you win that new car on the Price is Right, and then you realize you got to pay the taxes on that thing, you know? So anyway, I just want to let, let you know that as a community that we are thinking about this, and the anticipation, anticipation is that this will have a tremendous positive impact on property values throughout this Greenway project, and we're here to discuss those things further as far as how it impacts the residents who have lived there for their whole lives. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, very good. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, I want to, we had someone else that signed up to speak, but, so Ms. Sullivan, you're on for next week, as I've just been informed, so I apologize for the miscommunication there. I wasn't, I wasn't aware until just a few minutes ago, okay? So you'll come up next week on the agenda, if that's correct.
But Ms. Sullivan would need to make another application in the clerk's office to speak next week.
I can't speak now.
No, ma'am. You have to, you have to make an application to speak for next Tuesday in the, in the, in the clerk's office.
I made the application.
Well, you did, and we directed you to talk with the Building Department first and to get, yes, ma'am, and you did that, and with the understanding of that if you weren't satisfied with your answer there, then you could reapply to speak, and you can speak next Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
On that, to the speaker, I appreciate your heartfelt words as it relates to the concerns in District 3. We're continuing to have acts of negligence that are being done, not just in District 3, but all over our community. Nevertheless, you know, we hope that people will get the picture here soon as we continue to try to implement things that is necessary. The most important part, in my opinion, I feel that, is that we as a community have to step up, and I think that a lot of us are doing so. In doing so, we have these challenges of, you know, residents and business owners that we have to kind of awaken to the process that we are serious about our property value and, and we're serious about our community. It may have taken some time or whatnot, but there are some challenges there, and we're willing to, we're willing to face those challenges to make the difference. And that's what I like about Ms. Greenwood and CCRC and all of those other persons that called me on a consistent base with their concerns. As stated, we don't always agree, and that's great. But one thing I'd like about our disagreements is that we're still able within the conversation or the next day, we're still able to work together. We're really able to work together, not saying quote-unquote "we work together," we really don't, but we actually work together. We make things and we try to make things happen. And so, so I appreciate the dedication there. In doing so, within the next week, we'll be announcing our district meeting, where we'll be discussing some other matters, and then we'll get an update. I'll have an update as it relates to the project behind Carver. I wanted to appreciate the Public Works Department as it relates to those concerns that have been turned in with illegal dumping. And then I want to also set out and challenge that we make sure that we can figure out whatever it is we need to do to get some cameras up in some, re-announce the areas where these guys continue to do illegal dumping. Whoever it is on Rogers Street, if we have not identified, and then I'm asking, I don't know if it's legal or not, if I can get a response, if, if we find out whom that person was, that we can identify who they, they are, that we can post their picture on, on whatever social sites and wherever else we are, because that was ridiculous. And whatever their frame of thought was, that is just, I'm not understanding what, where they were. But if we can definitely do a highlight, it's not even to, you know, it's, it's just to prove a point that we're serious about keeping our community clean. And I'm, I'm going to be biased and speak about District 3 because I, from my understanding, the person is not from District 3. I think they had an out-of-town tag, or not, not from the city, rather, they had an out-of-town tag, and so for them to think that District 3 is the landfill, they got to be out of their freaking mind. They got to be out of their mind. And so, and anywhere else in the city, but again, I'm, I'm going to be biased at this moment because they chose, you know, Rogers Street and District 3. So I appreciate those concerned neighbors. I think Jason, I can't even think of Jason's last name right now, but-
Wilson?
No. I almost said it, Jason Hill. Jason Hill for immediately coming out and responding to it. He did speak to the concerned neighbor, and so, and all those residents, you know, that have concerns. And so, again, Ms. Sullivan, we'll have you on next week's agenda. Apologize for the miscommunication there. In closing, I would like to wish my mother a happy birthday today.
Wonderful. Happy birthday. Happy birthday. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Don't have much. Just want to take a minute first just to say thank you to all the department heads. We know this, it's major undertaking what we do, but, you know, we're concerned about the whole city, and I, as I said last week, I think sometimes you have to get out, actually ride around to see some of the projects that are going on. Every city have issue they have to tackle, no matter where you go, big cities, small cities, large cities. So this is our first term, but I think our overall report card, at the end of these four years, you'll be able to see a lot of the work that's been done, a lot of the streets. I want to mention them again. Right up George Wallace Drive, if you haven't been over there lately, right over on South 6th Street near Johnson's, if you haven't been over there lately. A lot of things are going on all over the city, different parts of the city. So we're making some progress. We realize we've still got a lot of work to do in the city, but we're here on behalf of the citizens, doing the best we can, and be patient with us, we're not done yet. Just want to say that. Thank you, Mayor Ford. Thank you to the council. Just great to be in this position to try to do what we can to help our city to continue to move forward. to move forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Lathan.
Thank you, President Beck. I want to start first with, on behalf of the family and the mother of Warren Henry, to just say thank you, and I'm using this platform to say thank you because of the overwhelming comments that were made on social media, especially from our mayor's office. Thank you. Warren was an exceptional young man, and I just ask that you would continue to pray for the family and many friends as we continue to accept what God has allowed, and just to simply say thank you for all of the acts of kindness and the things that were said on behalf of him. Thank you. I would also like to say to Ms. Greenwood, thank you for your concern and your efforts as it relates to Districts One and Districts Three, as it relates to the urban grant, and making sure that those districts are the necessary things that need to happen in those districts to make sure that we are, that the, there is a transparency and that those things are connected well. Thank you for, for coming today and expressing your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now, Mayor Ford.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I will respond to some of Ms. Greenwood's comments. Thank you for everything. I know we, we murder, created, Crake murdered or Crake Myrtle?
Crake Myrtle.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. Yeah, but we did cut the Crake Mytles, and, and there's some more trimming to be done at Carver. We appreciate her interest in the Carver Community Center. She's working through the CCRC Committee. We had a great meeting about that. We agree with her on the painting and everything. I told her I'd buy the paint personally, and then we would allow the painting to be done. She actually said she'd do the painting herself, so we're willing to work and do everything we can do, not only in District Three, but in One, Two, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, too. So, the dumping is a problem, as District Three representative said earlier, but it's also still in a lot of other areas, and we're monitoring that. Now, I will say this, it has gotten a lot, lot better since we first came in office. We had some problems in District Six in some areas, in South Gadsden, and District Five, and that's been cleaned up a lot, too. We have actually issued the citations and followed through with that, and we will continue to do so. That is important in our administration. I want to announce the Them Dirty Roses is a concert that will be at the amphitheater September the eighteenth at seven P.M. Them Dirty Roses, we had them before, and we had approximately a thousand, fifteen-hundred people in attendance. It was a lot of, a lot of fun for those who attended. I did not make Them Dirty Roses, but I'm not sure if I'll make it this time, but if not, I hope everyone will have fun. They are excellent band, and they, one of the persons, one of the individuals in the band is from Gadsden, Alabama. Recycling Week is next week, September twenty-second, twenty-ninth. Please put this on your calendar, I get a lot of calls about this, the Free Dumpster Day. The Free Dumpster Day is again September twenty-ninth. It'll be the same locations as we had li, last time. However, it will be the last time that we're able to take your stuff to the West Megan Sports Complex because it is in demo process as we speak. So, the Free Dumpster Day will be September twenty-ninth. That's with Councilwoman Monatras Subcommittee. Want to remind people, please, I fill out Bob Barker on the Price is Right, go to the Humane Society and adopt a cat or dog, because the alternative is not what we want to do. We want to have those fur babies adopted. Wanted to let some people know, I've dealt with someone in the police department the other day. We moved police records out to the East Gadsden Precinct, which is an excellent precinct. However, the mold and mildew has taken over parts of the building of City Hall. I feel for a lot of the employees. We're doing everything we can do, and want this council to know and the public to know to modify this situation. This building is full of asbestos and full of mildew and mold. You don't smell it as bad in here, but if you go on down to the police department and some other areas in the basement, it's kinda become a major issue. So, we're having to zone off some of the areas and redirect traffic, and we're trying to hurry as fast as we can to build the people a new City Hall to get out of this building because to remed, what's the word I'm looking for, Ryan? Remediate the situation would cost millions of dollars to get rid of the asbestos and mold and mildew out of this building. So, I want to thank the council for allowing us to build a new city council. It's coming at a good time. The nine-eleven ceremony, it's been mentioned before, please don't forget about that. That is a beautiful ceremony that's gonna be taking place. The paving, I want to mention that. We just got out of District Three paving. We were paving in District Four and Five, South Sixth Street, and that did a wonderful job. Went in down to District Three, and we paved, and Commissioner Jeffrey Washington went in with us on some streets in District Three, and we went in fifty-fifty with him on paving some projects. Now, we have mobilized the paving crew to District Two. They're in District Two right now. I want everybody to understand to be patient. When you go in there and you, you mobilize them, they're gonna pave five or six streets in an area. They're not gonna go in one district in this area and then go all the way over here and pave a street over here. We're trying to do it as logistically and economically feasible to be able to pave all the roads in this little area that we can, and then we're moving to another area, trying to get everybody a piece of the pie. How are we picking the roads? We're picking red, yellow, green. We told you, we've, we said this a lot of times before, we hired a study to come out, somebody put a camera on their car. They rode every street in Gadsden, took us six months to do this. It was a company that does this, and they, they told us which streets are dangerous and which streets need to be paved the most. So, we take the most red roads in a district, and we say, let's try to get all these in this amount of time. Then we get out of here, and we go to another district. So, that's what's taking place. The paving crew is working. It saved us six hundred and something thousand dollars by having our own paving crew to pave South Sixth Street. So, that's just one road. So, I'm excited about them. Those guys work, man, they work. They're fantastic, but they love doing what they do, and I'm glad they do because I don't. So, want to talk about paving Broad Streets last thing, as Councilman Wilson, Councilman Wilson said before. Last year, we had five-point-five million dollars in the budget from Coach Tuberville's budget when we were on our trip to D.C. Congress decided not to pass a budget, if y'all remember that. They passed what we call a continuing, a CR, Continuing Resolution. So, therefore, they went based on the previous year's budget and just kept running again when President Trump got elected, and no line item appropriations were included, so we were cut out. We went back, Coach Tuberville got that money back in the budget again. They're bringing it back up in October. It's, hopefully, they'll pass a budget, which we've been told they will do so. If they do, we will secure five-point-five million dollars for that bridge. Now, we could have already torn down the bridge and done a bridge like they have in Southside Rainbow City with the big green sides, and that's the way it'll look. That's not something I want to do. Our Memorial Bridge is a, is a staple of our community. We want to pressure wash it. You don't go back with asphalt on that bridge, and we gotta go back with concrete, that's what it was intended for. Then I want to light that thing up like a Christmas tree, like Malfunction Junction down in Birmingham, make it look beautiful. If you watch the news every day or every night, or in the morning, it's almost like ABC thirty-three, forty, NBC thirteen, Fox six, Channel Nine, CBS, the camera shoots down on our Memorial Bridge. Y'all, that's branding our city. That's what we're known for. So, we want to put the money into that bridge. If for some reason they don't pass a budget in D.C., and we don't get the money that was told that we were gonna be receiving, we had the money there in the bond that we're gonna redo that bridge. The bridge is gonna be redone. It's just, I'm ADD, trust me. I want things done yesterday, but it's gonna get done. There's other roads that need to be paving, too, and we appreciate your thoughts, and trust me, I know what they are, and we're getting to them as fast as we can. But it, Broad Street Bridge is a staple that I want to keep the way it is with the concrete. I think Jason says a hundred and thirty years old, maybe? So, it's nothing that we want to tear down and come back with a bridge with green railings going across. I think that'd look horrible. So, that's all I have. But thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank the council and the department heads and our mayor's office employees for the budget that y'all passed today. It's the little things that matter. There's a lot of things in that budget that'll help the city grow. Keep in mind, the city has grown at an average of a ten-point-something percent a year since we have taken office, all of us. We have gotten our payroll to fifty-five percent of the budget, which if you own a bu, a business like I do, that's about where you want to be. And not only did we get our payroll down to fifty-five percent, but we gave pay increases at the same time, and that's something that we're proud of being able to do. So, we increased revenue and we cut expenses, and Brandon, thank you for doing that. The most important part of that is our lowest-paid employee now, well, we see twelve dollars an hour instead of eleven dollars an hour, so seasonal part-time labor. We started, I think, at nine dollars when I came into office, and now we're at twelve dollars, so this is good. We're headed in the right direction, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford.
Mr. President, just one foot, but I'd like everybody- I'd just like everybody to acknowledge that for what I'm fairly certain is the first time ever, the Price is Right was mentioned twice in a city council meeting today.[1695.51][1695.51](Laughter)
Be noted. That would be good. Y'all, we've had a, we've had a good day of government, as my friend Councilman Smith likes to say. I don't know if you said that today, but I'm gonna, if you did, I'm gonna repeat it. But thank you very much. We did have a good day of government. We just passed the largest budget in the city of Gadsden's long history, almost eighty-one million dollars operating budget. It's phenomenal. It's due in a large part to you, the citizens. That's a projected income for our city, so that means a lot of people are spending a lot of money in the city of Gadsden. It's due to our employees that work tirelessly here in the city of Gadsden, our department heads. It's due thanks to our administration and Brandon Phillips and his office in the Finance Department. Wonderful job. You know, they just had another clean audit of the bond people that were, that Mayor Ford is working with, and the auditor have all said Gadsden is in the best financial shape it's ever been in. So, this council, we take great pride in that. We're responsible for the, for the money, for, we're fiscally responsible for the taxpayers' money here in the city of Gadsden. And want to thank Mayor Ford for, for coming in here and from day one exhibiting strong leadership with clear goals and a clear vision. I don't think anybody's ever wondered, like, where are we going and what are we gonna be